On for April 30th, 2025, please stand voiceless in the flag.
Aye.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, undivided, and just as for all.
As the superintendent to do role call.
Mr. Austin.
Present.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yeah.
Ms. Cormier.
Present.
Mr. Lipsit.
Present.
Mr. Moranin.
Present.
Ms. Wetzel.
Present.
Ms. Crowley.
There you go. We have reports and presentations from superintendent and staff. We have the updates from Mr. Dizio and Dr. Crowley. Who wants to go first? Alex, you're taking the lead or?
Sure. So tonight, as we do annually, is the public hearing for the FY26 budget, which we've presented publicly multiple times, most recently at the last school committee meeting. We scheduled the public hearing. The budget document has been available at the library here at the office and online. And so at this point, it's typical to turn it to Mr. Dizio to give an overview of the budget and to allow for public hearing.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Crowley. First and foremost, thanks to everyone in the room for a thoughtful and collaborative effort thus far in the budget cycle. It's a process that has started for me back in October, November, when I went to each of the individual buildings, met with building principals, and really got to know the needs of their buildings. And we have built the budget based on those needs. The budget before you today represents a several months-long collaborative effort to address those needs and to do so in a way that is fiscally responsible. And so today's budget, the proposed budget amount is $96,402,440. This represents a percentage increase year over year of 6.68 percent. And that dollar increase year over year is $6,035,819. I have spoken sort of ad nauseam about budget drivers and components, but I am happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Dizio? All right. Seeing none, can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I will.
Anything?
Second.
Dr. Crowley, okay. You're good?
Yes.
Okay. Check it. Motion to open the public hearing, Madam Chair.
Second.
Vice Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Ellen. So if anyone wants to come up and address the budget, please come up and do so. You haven't sat down yet, so you might as well take a stand. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Evening. How are you?
Wonderful.
It's no bad. I say that because we just spent two and a half hours together.
Good evening. How are we doing?
Wonderful.
Good. Just briefly on the budget. I know you've got a lot of information in front of you and you've got a vote to make tonight to send down to City Hall. I just want to say that I do appreciate very much all the effort that's been put into it. I appreciate the collaboration with City Hall, the city council, my office. We had significant investments last year, and we did not want to lose any ground this year. So we've tried very hard to maintain what we put in place. And I think the budget, proposed budget in front of you tonight reflects that attempt at a maintenance type of budget. So I appreciate all the work to get to this point. As we've discussed before, we're at a step in the process now where this committee will take a vote and send down to my office the budget and the amounts and the line items that you believe is necessary to maintain and keep the district moving forward and to make sure that our students are getting what they need. I will take that information, incorporate it into the overall city budget, because as we discussed, the same or similar process minus the, minus the school committee role, but the same process of evaluating and proposing and submitting a budget department by department by department is happening across the city. So at that point, once we gather all that information together, from my perspective, I and my team need to make sure that we are submitting to the city council an overall city budget, including school department, that we think meets the needs of the residents and is affordable by the residents. So that process is, it's currently ongoing, and when we get your piece, we'll incorporate that into it. There'll be additional discussion with the school committee and its representatives, just as there will be additional discussion with each of the department heads, to try to get to that point where we have that overall city budget that we can live with. I will try to incorporate what you're sending down as much as possible. If there's any discrepancy at all, that will be shared with the committee, and it'll be a collaborative discussion about why and how we got there. But at the end of the day, it's my responsibility to send to the council that budget that I think we can live with. And then it's in their hands to determine what they do with that budget. And I appreciate their role as well as yours. We did, as I said, make great strides, I believe, last year. And I know you agree with me that we are seeing the results of those investments. They were wise decisions. I'm glad we did it. I am also mindful that the residents and taxpayers of Woburn have to bear the burden of the decisions we make. So there's that constant balance. And I know you feel the weight of that just as much as I do, just as much as the city council does. So we've done it together. We'll continue to do it together. We'll reach a budget that we can all live with. And I really just want to say tonight that I appreciate your cooperation and your collaboration, and I appreciate everything you do to try to make the Woburn Public Schools the very best they can be. So thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to recognize Chuck Bywell, who's in the audience, as our liaison. Chuck, would you like to say anything before we open?
Good enough.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak on our budget? Everybody's thrilled.
Motion to close the public hearing on the budget this evening. Excuse me, this evening.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay. All right, so we need a vote to send our budget to City Hall?
Make a motion, we vote to send this fiscal budget 2026 to City Hall as the final number indicated by Mr. Dizio this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that a yes, Ellen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Pass the 7-0, we send that along. Well, that was easy.
There you go.
All right, so now we have the consent agendas for the approval of 4-8, 25 minutes and the 4-16, 25 minutes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You ready to lock?
Aye.
Yeah, yeah. And now we have a public comment for anything besides our budget. If anybody wants to speak on anything else besides the budget this evening, come on down.
My name is Beth Fortnum. I live at 21 Glenwood Avenue, Woburn. Oh, sorry. I'm not going on this.
We won't count this one in a minute.
Yeah. That's the agenda.
No problem.
Wasn't expecting this to move so quick. Move so fast. So I'm going to be out of town next week, so I am here today to express my ongoing concerns over the redistricting in Woburn Elementary Schools. One of the biggest concerns is that this group continues to discuss the building of a new school to house ECP like it is guaranteed, and as a result, you're taking a redistricting approach that considers an end map that may never happen. Voters en masse are feeling the pressures of the rising cost of living. This is being seen in other cities where overrides and referendums for necessary expenses are being rejected by voters. The reality today is that people are concerned about their personal finances. There are more voters in this city that do not have kids in the school system than do. Many of those whose kids are out of the school system have the attitude that it's not their problem anymore. A new school is not guaranteed to pass a budget referendum in Woburn. We need to focus on Phase 1 maps because this is the only reality we have right now. To the school committee who will be voting on May 5th, I ask you to consider the following points. We are past the point of having good options. The comment made at a previous school committee meeting about rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic continues to ring in my head. Scenario 3 versus scenario 6 is a choice to determine the lesser of two evils. Until a new school is fully approved, the priority should be moving the fewest number of students while still alleviating the pressure points. Scenario 3 and scenario 6 are ranked equally by the guiding principles, yet scenario 6 moves more students. Scenario 3 is the better option as it moves the fewest number of students at this time. As a parent of Reeves children, I am deeply upset by the takeover of our school by the ECP and the potential loss of K through 5 teaching positions. I strongly support scenario 3 over scenario 6 because it only cuts 1 K through 5 classroom instead of the 2 in scenario 6. Additionally, no kids are moved from the Reeves in Phase 1 of scenario 3. Reeves is the only West Woburn school. It should not be diced up to prioritize ECP. In the feasibility study conducted between 2021 and 2023, there was an estimate to add an ECP to either Joyce or Reeves for $33 million. This option could be the fastest path to alleviating space issues and provide additional time to plan for a North Woburn school. Please move forward and try to get a new school, preferably one that is likely to be approved quickly on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Come on down.
I live at One Albert Street, Woburn. You've probably received several of my emails in regards to redistricting. I have three kids as of the fall that will still be in elementary school. My three kids are at the Malcolm White. The issue I have is you're taking 15 to 20 kids from the Malcolm White to play some elsewhere, to bring in more kids from the Clapp District in. That's not fair to my kids, like not in the least bit. Leave my kids at the Malcolm White. We are the Malcolm White District. You literally cut my neighborhood in half, and it's not fair to my three. I'll have a fifth grader, a fourth grader, and a second grader. I know if it goes through with option 6, it goes to the Goodyear. So my questions are, are you So, my questions are, are you busing our kids? My kids can no longer walk. Don't say they can, they can't. Wildwood and Salem Street are the two worst streets for any kid to walk. I walked that myself the other day, 45 minutes without my children. Took me 15 minutes just to cross Salem Street. So, other than that, it's us carpooling while driving. Now, for me, with three kids at the Goodyear, how do pickups work? I need these questions answered, like valid questions, like they need to be answered. Then, I have one that's on the sense of IEP. Is he going to be able to preview the new school if it is decided he has to go to the Goodyear? Because he has a very hard time acclimating to new surroundings, new teachers, new everybody. He might have one, maybe two kids, and he goes over to the new school. And are we going to wait till last minute to let us know that these kids are going over to the Goodyear? Because that's not fair. Like, option three is, to me, the best idea, but option six is just miserable for a lot of kids at the White. I mean, 15 to 25. That upsets me absolutely. And please answer the questions I put in my email. Like, these are just valid questions, like, are you busing, are you not? There's a lot of things from my aspect, three kids at the Goodyear, so does that mean if I'm doing pickups, are all three of my kids going to be ready for pickup? Or do I keep going around in the line? Like, valid questions that really need to be answered for parents like me if there's going to be a big move. Thank you.
I'm sure some of your questions will be answered this evening, and we did receive your email, so they will be addressed. Thank you. Anybody else? Want to speak? We won't bite, I promise.
Hello, I'm Emily Peters. I live at Four Summit Street. I am proudly the Reeves rep to the Parent Caregivers Committee for Redistricting. So, I have several concerns about scenario six, such as higher inequality of class sizes within schools, larger classes, more large classes than scenario three, far less proximity to school, huge amount of students being moved into the Malcolm White while their higher needs population remains high. And of course, there's 60% increase without any, without better overall results. But I'm going to focus on how it affects the Reeves and the feedback that I've been getting from my parents and that I've observed. So, currently, the Reeves has 16 K through five classes. Phase scenario three drops our school to 15 classrooms, while phase six drops down to 14 classes. In order for this to happen, component R2, which is approximately 39 students leaves, and it will be moved to the Hurd Wyman. So, the explanation is that the ECP is expected to grow and the Reeves will be hosting these classes. Of course, this is going to create a domino effect. Many more students are being shifted throughout the city. Initially, this was rolled out as a way to protect the Reeves from overpopulation. As it's been, but recently, it has been announced that most of the four ECP classes at the Shamrock will be moved to the Reeves in this scenario. My question is, does this cycle end with the ECP being moved into the Reeves or does it begin with the ECP being moved into the Reeves? Keeping the ECP together is not a guiding principle. How does this align with the guiding principles? The West End is a large area, which as people in this room have pointed out, it is growing. And there's only one elementary school within proximity. As the K through five disappears, what will happen next? I have seen caregiver advisors review their own schools and look at them objectively while potentially being moved out of their own schools, looking at the greater good of their school and the city as a whole. I hope that the school committee looks at the agenda of moving most of the ECP classes into the Reeves at the expense of our K through five program, other high needs students, and while going against your own guiding principles with the same benevolence as the parent advisors have been looking at this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else want to address the committee?
Hello, Brian Preventure, 25 Frontford Park Ave. One of the things that I just wanted to throw out there and talk about tonight, the community forums were great. We heard a lot of great feedback. It was great to get a lot of information from the schools as well. Some of the things that I found extremely interesting were the fact that, you know, there was talk about how we definitely need to redistrict for the fall, but then after that, there could be ways that we could phase in moves or talk about potentially looking at new ads, so people that move into the district, where do they go? And so, that kind of ties in with something that a lot of the caregivers had been talking about, which is phase three map seems to be the favored map, at least when we talk amongst ourselves. However, I hear the concerns from the committee, I hear the concerns from the school, that six maybe provides more flexibility. So, we have done some work on it and it looks like you could start with a phase three or a scenario three phased map and then gradually move towards that end six if it was necessary. And so, I just want to put that out there as a possibility and something that I'd love the committee to look at. I know that we had sent a letter and I hope that you all received it and looked at it. But again, just to throw it in the back of your mind, something to think about, that if that really is a possibility and we can look at adding people along the way, I think that would be really helpful for the community so that we are not going to the six end map all at once. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Hello, Ashley Peterson at 20 Cranston Circle. Okay. I just want to say that I strongly support scenario three. However, I want to focus on the need this evening to address component M2 in either scenario. I would like to encourage the school committee to take the opportunity tonight, or Monday if it falls out tonight, to address the clear issue that has been raised several times before around component M2. The component moving to, this is the component moving to the Goodyear, and it causes those students in component M2 to become isolated from not only a neighborhood school, but also from any families who are attending the Goodyear. As components G4 and G5 that surround M2 have no families and are in fact unsafe areas to walk through to get to school. If it is possible to postpone that move in scenario six phased map and/or potentially eliminate the need for the move altogether in the end map, I would strongly request that the committee discuss these numbers and this possibility of that even happening tonight, because it seems to be a pretty big oversight. And there's, you know, a small but strong chunk of families who are affected and it feels like it might not even be necessarily like a must do, that there might be other options, so it's my plea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Anyone else? Want to come on down?
Hello, Alex Tizell, Malcolm White Parent Rep, Five Majority Lane. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and for all of your hard work on this process. The end line is in sight. We're almost there. I just have a couple tiny things that I wanted to address. You've heard me before outline my concerns with phase map six. And as you can see, many of my co-caregiver committee members have the same concerns. As such, we have put our heads together as a committee and realized that phase map three works for end map six. We did submit a letter as a group that outlines our thinking here and gives more details about this. Phase map three to end map six feels like a really good compromise. It's moderate. The phase map three is moderate. It relieves the pressure points and people seem to really like it. But it also gives us the opportunity to create space for the ECP in the future with end map six. So, I'm really looking forward to hearing more about this tonight. In addition to this, I've heard from my Malcolm White community about their concerns regarding the M2 neighborhood becoming an isolated island. I want to second Ashley's request to ask the committee to consider removing M2 moving from the end map and then also possibly considering M5 maybe a gray line, so a gray area as M5 is also a very, currently a small number of students who attend the Malcolm White. And those components were the only ones moving in phase map six. So, again, thank you, everybody, for your hard work. I'm really excited to kind of get past this part and move on to helping our kids transition and our families adjust to, you know, the new schools that they're going to be going to. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, guys, Rachel Kuberry, Six Blake Street, Hurd Wyman Parent. I just have some questions that may be answered in the presentation that is after this, but since we can only speak before, you get my questions now. But first, a thank you about the rising fifth graders. I had asked about that. I know a lot of people in my school community and a lot of parents of rising fifth graders asked about that, so thank you for making that announcement already. In taking a quick look through the timeline, however, I don't see anything about a binding request for the rising fifth grader, so that's just something to think about. I think a lot of the parents thought that that survey was a question about what we would consider doing, so there does need to be a binding ask. And so, I hope we'll hear more about that. Related to that, I would expect other people, and that's sort of in some of the documents, other people to request exemptions based on their own needs. I know we have that as a policy now. But some information about that timeline for when those people would find out would be super helpful. That might be new requests based on the redistrict and that might be existing requests based on teachers who take their kids to school, siblings who attend the school with their sibling who's in a district-wide program. I really am very interested to hear more about this. You'll notice as we go through it that the Hurd Wyman showed up loud, which is not surprising, but I noticed in a quick look through the packet around the community survey that it doesn't say what people voted for. So, I really hope that that's going to be part of the presentation because we all know that was a question that was asked. And just to echo what a couple other people already said, I share the concerns around the phase map six. I've sent detailed emails about that already. And I share the concerns around M2 remaining an isolated component of Goodyear should it be moved. That was difficult to see when we look at the colored maps because the Goodyear looks really good, clean lines, nice purple rectangle, and when you look at that neighborhood, it's just surrounded by industry. So, can't wait to hear more about that too. But thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, we can move on to reports and presentations. Math and Science Teams. Dr. Powell, you want to?
Yeah, so recently, the Woburn High Memorial Math and Science Team has represented us very, very well at some meets, and it's an opportunity for them to come and share their prowess. I hope with the budget in front of them, they can help us. But I...
But don't test us, please.
Please don't. So, before you begin the presentation, if you could, just introduce yourself, that would be great.
This is Joseph from the High School, teaching chemistry and go to science team. One of the coaches.
Jason Beast, senior.
Robert Ottenzio, I'm also a senior at Woburn High.
I'm Anik Patel. I'm the captain of the math team, or co-captain of the math team.
I'm Currie Marheem, and I'm also a senior, and I'm one of the captains of the science team. The others were Bobby and Jason.
I'm Amy Miller. I am one of the co-captains of the math team.
And I'm Haley Taglanji. I am the other coach of math.
Welcome.
Welcome, everybody. Do I have the right presentation behind you?
Yes.
Are we going to start off first?
Do you want to get the lights or...
Yeah, you can start off first, that's fine.
Right. Good evening, everyone.
I'm just going to turn off the lights behind you just so that it will be a little better. There you go. There we go.
Good evening, everyone. I know, speaking on behalf of the whole science team, our wonderful coaches and other captains, we're very grateful to be here and get to share some of the highlights from this season and our competitions. So, to start off, just had a photo of the team. Would you be able to go to the next slide? Where's that? Alright. Just a short overview is that we're going to look at our team, our practice in competitions, some of our major accomplishments that we would like to share with you all. Just a short description of some of our events, our impact on the community, and finally, a brief conclusion. Next slide, please. Alright, just to go over our team members, some of the people that I've had the pleasure of getting to know. As teammate is Cyrus, Aditya, Elisa, Evan, Jaden, Kriya, Si, Saloni, Samira, Trudy, Terrence, Valentina, Priam, and last but not least, Kareem, Jason, and Anik, working with a math team captain, just together as a STEM group. Next slide, please. Next, our coaches, Ms. Joseph. Unfortunately, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Ox could not be here. They really play such a massive role. They help organize the events and help organize students. As captains, we help, we help keep the team in check and keep everyone, I guess, studying, helping them remember to come to the meetings. Ms. Joseph, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Ox all do an incredible job of helping the captains do that with their teaching powers. Alright. Alright, for our team practices, just to cover it briefly, we meet every Tuesday after school. A lot of our events are individual studying and practicing. We have monthly competitions, and those competitions consist of three teams for three different events with four people per team. Next slide, please. Alright, just to go quick. So, do you want to explain it or show? You don't have to explain it. Because of our... So, I'm very grateful that as a captain, I get to celebrate with co-captains, with coaches, and with the students of how our hard work has paid off. It's not very easy to deal with school already and make time to go study for something completely different. Yet, through weekly meetings, checking out with each teammate particularly individually, and encouraging them to continue studying, asking them if they need help, that made a big difference to help us reach this now. And so, again, just to reiterate, super grateful for my teammates, coaches, and captains and how, you know, we run this together, and that is the fruit of our hard labor. Next slide, please. Alright, some event highlights. There's a variety of different events. I think over the year, there's at least 36 nine-meets. Oh, maybe I had that wrong. Yeah, there's a variety of different meets. Some of them include building. We got to build a rope climber that has to vary at different speeds. This was my favorite, studying nuclear chemistry. I really enjoyed this, taking notes. And lastly, Kareem can elaborate more on the structural tower that we got to build. And lastly, Kareem can elaborate more on the structural tower that we got to build.
We were instructed to build the leaning tower of Pisa out of popsicle sticks and glues, and so we built the tower and spent a bunch of time making it, as you can see in the picture on the right. And so our end goal was to hold like 40 pounds of sand without it collapsing. And we went a little overkill, and it did really well. We spent way too long to building it, and so it was so strong that we put all the weights on at once.
Wow.
And another photo, it also held up Jason. Jason was able to. Next slide, please. Next, to want to look at the community. Yeah, we've been able to reach out to other students at the school across different grades. That's a big part of, even though we're all captains and we're seniors, we get to work with freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, which can sometimes make things easier or harder depending on the event. But it's definitely been a challenge learning how to help people when they're at different places, especially in their knowledge with school, and especially with science subjects. Yeah, so we got to participate in future Tannenite and the Activities Fair, again, beginning to share some of our practices and hopefully good practices that would make an impact on other people with some incoming freshmen as well as present students. Next slide, please. Again, about the communal aspect, it's actually a really big part. While a lot of our events are individual and it requires a lot of studying, there's also a lot of group work. Again, our popsicle stick tower, that was really fun. We worked with that as a group for a long time, staying after school, seeing what was the right design. Do we really need so many popsicle sticks? Yeah. Additionally, just to run over it one more time, students are studying together, also just working on their own homework because some of these meets go very late into the evening. Finally, one more thing is when we're at the meets, we compete with other teams from different schools. And something that I really enjoyed was at the end of the year, all of the groups from different schools were split up, and we were assigned to work with completely new people. And that was harder for some people. But it was a really good point of an overall goal of where we're going next, because most of the students here, most of my teammates, were going on to college to pursue STEM careers, and that requires working with people you've never met. All right, next slide, please. All right, I just wanted to say thank you for your time. It was a pleasure to, it was a pleasure to share this. It was a lot of hard work, starting from, I think it was October.
Yes, the first meeting is October.
All the way until April.
April was the last.
Yeah. So it was a lot of weekly meetings, but I'm happy that it paid off and that we can also show something for it, that we've made good progress and a lasting impact on our student community.
I think I shared the math team presentation just recently.
Oh. There it is. Where is it?
I think I just shared it to.
Just meaning during the meeting?
Yeah, just now.
Oh, so I.
Next, Jean.
While we wait, do you want to take a couple of questions from the committee?
Sure, thanks.
Mr. Maranis?
Thank you, Chair. If I could, you mentioned earlier, some of you are obviously off to college, perhaps while they're trying to find the next document, you could tell us what college and perhaps what course of study you're going to be taking.
As for me, I'm going to pursue physical therapy. After having my own injury and getting to go through the rehab process, I've really enjoyed learning about it and also having some experience helping patients out of physical therapy clinic, and that's really formed how I want to help people.
And what school are you going to?
UMass Lowell.
Good job. Because I have an ankle if you want to take. Anybody else have questions?
I'm pursuing, oh, I'm pursuing a degree in data analytics at UMass Dartmouth, and I guess I wanted to pursue data analytics because my parents always said I have too much energy and I need to go do something quiet for once.
Very good.
That's a good one. So I'll be studying at Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, which is in upstate New York. I'll be studying electrical engineering with a dual in either computer or physics, so I'll decide that when I get there.
Good job.
I plan on going to UMass Lowell to study mechanical engineering.
Good job. Awesome.
All right. So I have the show ready.
Yeah, science team makes it pretty tough to follow up. So I have a few points here, if you don't mind me just looking at my phone a little bit. So I'll just quickly explain how math team works. So the overhead administration is the Massachusetts Mathematics League, which we call MML for short. And so each contest is ordered with six individual rounds with one team round. So the way we order people is that each round has five participants, and each participant chooses three rounds to be in, and each round has three questions. So it's very individual-based. Aside from the team round, everyone's points are basically just if you get the answer right or wrong, and that counts towards our main score. So we have a main roster of 10 people, and anyone else that wants to participate, we call an alternate, so their scores won't count towards our main competition, but they can still get a feel for how the competitions are. So as you can see, our topics range from algebra all the way up to trigonometry. So it covers all the levels. There's really no prerequisite math level that you have to be in to join our team. If you don't want to participate, you can just sign up as an alternate, get a feel for how the competitions are and see if you like it. So that way, it's very inclusive. You really have nothing to worry about when you join, so I think that's really cool. If we move on to the next slide. So some accomplishments. Our last meet, if you remember from last year, I was here as well, we scored 72 points, which is our program high, and this year, we broke another record with 91 points.
Wow, good job.
And I think we scored higher than every team in the division above us as well.
Yay. Good job.
And every member scored more than six points, so they got at least one question in every round, which is, it was kind of our goal the whole year to get that done, so I'm happy we got it done. What else do we have? So what do we do differently from last year? So I think two years ago, one of our captains introduced the idea of quizzes. So the way MML kind of trains us for problems is they send us the first problem for every round as a kind of practice sheet. So obviously, the numbers will be different, but you can get a feel for at least the first problem for each round. So what we started doing is writing up solutions for each problem and then having quizzes with slightly different problems, so people can get used to how the problems are going to be. And that's very useful because you really want to train that problem-solving muscle when you're doing these types of problems. Just changing the numbers, it really doesn't, it doesn't train that muscle to really solve more problems. So what we did was we formalized the entire process. We wrote down solutions in a proper math editor. We printed them out, and we had people actually take quizzes in the classroom as if we were actually at the meet. And I mean, clearly, that worked. We got 91 points, so I think we're at least doing a lot better than what we used to be. I remember my freshman year, we had a meet where we scored six points. So yeah, we're just at the bottom of everything, so. No, so we've grown a lot since my freshman year, yeah. I think we have at least 20 students participating. So we practiced twice a week. It's around one hour-ish. So it's kind of, it's not a huge commitment, but you do have to put in time into our team, and people are really trying to improve. I've seen a lot of curiosity in mathematics. We've even had freshmen try out the trigonometry rounds, which is like, that's awesome. I don't remember that happening, at least until before I was a freshman, so. So I want to talk a little bit about why this is important for Woburn students. And I feel like, at least when I was growing up, and I feel like this could be said for a lot of people, is that my teachers and parents have always been very intent on me being good at mathematics. I mean, we always push mathematics as this thing that we should be good at and how it'll help us in the future. And I think the reasoning for that has been kind of lost over the years. Obviously, I believe it. I think it's a great tool, but the real reason has been lost. So I'll kind of talk a little bit about that. So if we take, for example, our complex numbers round, I can almost guarantee that we will never have to take the square root of a complex number in our entire lives, but that's not, that's not really the point why we do it, right? I mean, I'm sure we can all remember a time when we were doing, we were sitting in a classroom and we were like, oh, when will I ever use this in my daily life? I mean, I've been guilty of it for sure, but so why is it important? Why do we do this? And I like to give this little analogy of a sports athlete. So if we imagine a football player, obviously, they lift weights, we do bench press, we exercise, but what play in football is there where we have to bench press like 200 pounds? There is none, right? You'll never have to curl dumbbells during actual games, so why do we do it? We're training our muscles. We're training to be better at problem solving through mathematics. So it kind of goes beyond the actual mathematics, if you say. Obviously, at a surface level, you are learning new math. It is important, especially if you are pursuing engineering or any STEM field, but the real skills that you gain from doing mathematics kind of extend beyond just the engineering field. It's really the problem-solving muscle that we're building here. So it's very important that we really engage in solving problems. I mean, you can't gain muscle from reading about exercises, right? You have to actually do them. You have to struggle with problems, and you have to make mistakes in order to grow. So I think we've really promoted that, or at least the whole art of embracing struggle. We, at least I try to design my problems to be tricky but not unsolvable, so you kind of take what you've learned, and if you think a little bit more, you will be able to get the solution, but that little tiny bit of extra critical thinking, I think that's really why we've done so well over the past few years. So moving on from that, I want to thank our coaches. I mean, this is completely impossible to do without our wonderful coaches, Ms. Tag and Ms. Miller. And also, if you haven't heard, our old coach, Mr. Prinsic, has left Woburn High, so he teaches at Reading Memorial High School now. So, Mr. Prinsic, if you're watching this, thank you for inspiring so many students, including myself, and I hope you continue to inspire students at Reading High. Yeah, I think that's mostly it from me. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Anybody on the committee? Mr. Lipsit?
This is sort of broadly to both the math and science teams. You know, I really appreciate the enthusiasm that you have, the commitment that you have, and, you know, certainly the results bear all that out. I also really appreciate, you know, the amount of emphasis you put on collaboration and community building, teamwork. It really comes through in the presentation and the way you talk about not just, you know, your own work, but talking about bringing underclassmen along and how you're supporting younger students as they join you, which is great. So I just, I really appreciate that. How many freshmen, I don't, you know, I need you to have like an exact number, but are you seeing the program grow? Are you seeing more younger students get involved?
Yeah, definitely. Over the last few years, we've had a lot of freshmen. We have, I think, four new freshmen this year. It might be more, but yeah, we've definitely seen growth over the years. So, and it's really pleasing to me because I love mathematics. I love seeing people at least spark their curiosity for a field that I love so much that makes me happy.
I hope that, as you said, you're studying.
Electrical engineering.
Electrical engineering. I hope that maybe somewhere along the line, you also give a little thought to a career in education, because what you were saying about inspiration and how the analogies that you're using in terms of why you learn things that you may never actually use in your life. My own students could hear that a little bit about history sometimes, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you'll think a little bit about that somewhere.
Yeah, maybe I'll be a professor.
There you go.
There you go. Ms. Wetzel?
Yes, just a huge congratulations to both teams on amazing achievements. Thank you so much for sharing for your passion and your dedication to what you're doing. It really shows and shines. And I want to say I do remember the math presentation from last year, and I remember that was the highest points you had gotten, and that was huge, and now you've gotten 91. I don't want to do the math here because I'm not on a math team, but this is good. So congrats on that. And then the stick tower you built, was there a limit to the number of sticks, or could you use as many sticks as you wanted?
Our goal was to have the lightest tower.
Oh.
We didn't do that. Because normally, the way the meets are made of, you have your main task, and there's always like a tiebreaker. So it would be, you have to hold the 50 pounds or was it 40 or 50 pounds? And the tiebreaker is if you hold that, who was the lightest?
Oh, got it.
What was the one with the rocket? It was, yeah, it was, I think it was heaviest. We could have the heaviest rocket in the longest airtime.
Oh.
So sometimes that gets tricky in the planning process of, all right, we need to build a rock. That's the easy part. We have to make it stay up. That's the hard part.
I like how you said building the rocket is the easy part.
Yeah, agreed. That would not be easy for me. But thank you, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations to the team that's not here as well. Thank you for representing them, and like Mr. Lipsit said, really energizing that younger generation of students that are coming into our school, so thank you so much, and good luck next year in college.
Thank you.
Good job. Is he okay? Good job. Dr. Tucker?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, Ellen, go ahead. Go ahead, Ellen.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious, especially for the seniors, if you feel that Woburn High provided you with an adequate background in math and science, or since, you know, you're here in those schools, do you want to offer us any feedback or anything to make the math and science experience at Woburn High better?
Do you have anything?
You're almost graduated, so go far.
Yeah. So for me, I don't know, I am not that great at math. That's why I'm on the science team. No, but just, of course, it affected everyone, but COVID pandemic, that was definitely a speed bump, which made it harder for me to deal with math. But even then, I really like what Anik said of how other students also helped me explore more into different trades. Kareem and I did a summer program about machining. I do not like coding. Figured that out quick. But yeah, just having other students who are passionate, who enjoy what they do, who are curious and want to explore. I mean, I was not very excited to study chemistry, but no, I love it more than anything, and hopefully, that's not Stockholm syndrome.
Thank you. That's a great answer.
So Woburn has definitely done an adequate job with their staff to help provide that education and resources for us to further it, but also by just continuing to cultivate curiosity in all their students, and that has an impact.
Great. Anybody else?
Speaking for behalf of the mathematics department, I think the school does a really good job keeping everything open for students. I mean, obviously, I being really passionate about mathematics, I kind of took a lot more classes earlier, but what I've seen. a lot more classes earlier, but what I've seen, um, in my students is that teachers are really willing to stay after school and really help out their students, actually understand the material rather than just teaching for a test. Also, for science, uh, I found, uh, a passion of mine for physics. I, I think physics would be probably one of my favorite classes I've ever taken, uh, in high school, and along with statistics. So, I think, uh, the school, uh, at least the teachers do a very good job at sparking that curiosity for the STEM fields in our students. And yeah.
Well, that's good to hear.
Good, wonderful answer. Thank you for that feedback, we fully appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. There you go. Are we all done? You can be dismissed?
I, I would just want to say thank you to the members of the science and math team for being here tonight, and also thank you to Ms. Taglianti, Ms. Joseph.
Ms. Miller.
Amy Miller, sorry. I'll go by first name when I see you. But, uh, no, thank you, uh, and, uh, Ms. Gustan Hoven for, uh, arranging for everybody to be here tonight. You know, we're in the middle of budget season, so if you could stay and help us figure that out. That'd be great. No, but, uh, genuinely, thank you. I, you're a great reflection of all that's good at, at the high school and, and Tana Country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And hopefully, we've, we've sparked a flame that burns for a long time at the school.
I hope you did.
Yep. Thank you very much for having us one more time.
Best of luck. Tough act to follow, but we'll have the, um, school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six calendar. Do we have? You're up. You didn't even need my help.
My favorite time of year. You're not right next to me. Tell me when I'm wrong.
Have, have we, have we cross-checked?
I'm never confident. There are many things I can do, and since second grade, telling time, counting days, never a strength. All right.
Sounds like a job for the math.
Yeah, no, no. If you've ever been in a room with me long enough, I, I, you will find that out quickly. All right. The twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar, um, looks very similar to the school calendar, and the hope is that, um, the more that each year that we can have the, it mapped and feel similar, especially to families, um, is our hope. So, again, um, when we've talked to the, previously about most of our half-days fall on Wednesdays, um, as that provides at least some disruption, um, within programming. And so, the first day of school for teachers is September second, for students, September fourth. The last day of school for, um, is June eighteenth. So, pressure's on Dr. Crowley. To not have any snow day stays.
Or have, or have three.
Oh, yes, yes. But certainly not one. I think that should be, should be it. And then the December, um, half-day, um, which is, has, which has been in the past as well, is the, there is one additional half-day that is elementary only, and that is December tenth.
So, do we have a vote?
Motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Aye.
Yay, good job. Now, redistricting. Drumroll.
Jean, do you have the presentation somewhere?
Jean? The redistricting?
It should be.
In the Dropbox?
It should be up there.
No?
Yeah, and then you can send it to home we had?
No.
Which one?
You need the survey results?
It should be up there.
Yeah, this, go over the next one.
See you for one more.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Yeah. Sorry, just, uh. Okay, um, so, what the hope tonight now is, after yesterday and Monday night's in-person forums, is to kind of provide the committee with some real-time data that we've collected over the past couple nights, and, uh, we will kind of share a synthesis of that with you. We're not getting to the level of detail that maybe you'll, you need, but if, we'll be happy to do so on Monday. One of the things we've done over the past two nights is taken all, as many questions as we could and put them into an FAQ as part of the presentation to answer questions as they came through. So, for example, one of the questions asked earlier tonight had to do with transportation, and the answer is, if a student is going to be transported as a result of the redistricting, that student will be notified way before the end of the year. As soon as we know which map has been chosen, that allows us to then redraw the bus routes and work with North Suburban on that. And so, again, it will be part of the implementation plan, but those types of questions have been asked, and we've tried to answer those on Monday and Tuesday night of this week, and we'll continue to try to answer as many questions as we can. The survey was issued, uh, we had a hundred and eighty responses representing all of the schools in Woburn. There were thirty, uh, different components of the sixty-seven components that were represented, um, that responded back to the survey. One of the things to point out, and it's true in almost any survey, is who responds? Um, and because that can have an impact on the survey. And so, one of the things, it's really hard to read here, and I apologize, I'll try to make it a little bigger, um, if that helps. You can see here, the, the Herald Wyman, um, is the, the overachiever here with, um, over eighty respondents. The Alta Vesta, um, didn't have quite as robust a response. But again, everybody at every school did respond. And so, one of the questions that was asked is which, how did the survey shake out? One of the reasons to tell you about who, who responded is who responds dictates the results of the survey. So, um, I'll get to, um, here are the components that responded. Again, we had thirty different components respond, and you can see, um, again, H ten and eleven, um, again, were the overachievers. But there was some Linsket response and some Reeves response, I mean, there's response everywhere, but again, who responds, um, does have an impact on the, on, on the result. Some preferences for scenario three. Fewer students overall were impacted, and I think we've heard that throughout. And that has been, uh, conversations we had at the committee level, uh, with the advisory group. It's hard to measure disruption. It's disruptive, um, but trying to disrupt a fewer number of students was something that people did react to. The scenario three, um, stronger proximity between their current neighborhood school. So, in other words, kids that were close enough to potentially see their school would not have to then move. That was one of the things that they alluded to. One of the things, where, where's all this, um, information coming from? I think I'll just pause here. We've had, Ms., I want to give Ms. Wetzel a, a, a shout-out. She has been aggregating emails for us, um, for the last few months. So, because people have submitted many, many different emails and different ideas. The survey itself and the public feedback from the last couple nights is kind of where we're pulling some of these things from. Certainly not every question, but the, the things that repeated themselves, we're trying to give, uh, tonight. It minimized the movement of rising fifth graders, allowing to finish in their current school. And so, one of the things that we've announced, uh, last night and Monday night is that we can allow the rising fifth graders to stay in their school if they so choose. And so, that has been figured out. Again, to Ms. Kubry's point earlier, we can, um, fix, with the implementation, uh, set different parameters on dates and times and, and let people know more details about when they need to let us know. Preserves continuity, continuity of student services and existing peer relationships. I think one of the things that we've, we've heard is that we don't want only one student from one component to move. The other thing that we've heard, and we, we tried to answer this in the forums, was that there are people worried about individual five oh fours and I E Ps. All of those I E Ps and five oh fours will be managed regardless of what school students go to. So, if there's a school that currently does not have the home for little wanderers, but students move there, or an I, a service provider is not there currently, the service provider will move. So, we will meet the needs of all students as we go through this process. Uh, this scenario is seen as more gradual, manageable approach as well. Common preferences for scenario six, um, more equitable for a long-term solution. So, this is sort of, uh, if we're going to do it, let's do it, and so that we only do it once, and so other people don't have to be affected again. One of the things we've talked about is we don't have a crystal ball. We're trying to go through this process so that we don't have to do it again prior to a new school being, being put online. There's no guarantees in this process. We're doing the best we can to try to work towards it. And again, scenario six, this was seen as a potential preference. The other preference here is that peer groups move together, and again, for the same reason that you don't want only one student to move from a component, you prefer to have more students move from a component. It was mentioned at one of the forums, if we would consider having, um, kids in the same class move together, um, and be assigned together. One of the things that, uh, we can talk through is that process and what that will look like. There'll be a teacher and principal input on who gets placed where, et cetera, to try to minimize the disruption to our students. Another potential, potentially alleviates crowding at the high enrollment schools more quickly. In other words, the Herald Wyman and the Goodyear are impacted by this, um, and it enables an earlier implementation of the end map vision. So, the scenario six was actually drawn up in large part because we were trying to anticipate the expansion of the E C P, and scenario six does allow for that to occur. At the Reeves, uh, it would move, if, if scenario six, as it's currently presented, I believe there would be two E C P classes, uh, in, in phase one that would, would go, but they don't need to go, we can talk through what that might look like. Overall, community feedback, again, minimizing student transitions, uh, disruption of special education services, after-school programs, uh, clear communication on timelines, phases need to be clear, and redistricting is necessary, but how and when it should be implemented are important. Key considerations, the request for consistent before and after-school care offerings across all schools. I don't know if you want.
I was going to do it when I get.
Okay, all right. So, we, that, that is something that we have looked at, um, and will speak to it in greater detail. The peer groups we talked about, um, one of the questions was whether we can grandfather different areas or certain groups, um, questions about long-term space planning for the E C P and a new school construction, um, and avoiding redistricting. These are, again, key considerations as the committee weighs its options.
Thank you for that. So, good evening. Hi, everyone. The ultimate goal of, of tonight was really a few, for a few different reasons. One, we anticipated that we had the two community forums over the past two days, and that there could potentially be questions that we didn't answer the past two days, and wanted to make sure that we had the space where we could provide those answers kind of as readily as possible. Um, we also recognize that we have the planned presentation, planned presentation for Monday night. Um, and so, we can, our goal is also to kind of be able to give you as much as we have in real time, but recognizing that there's still some things that we will have prepared for probably a more comprehensive look at everything together for Monday night for that presentation. And the hope tonight is to kind of answer as many of the lingering questions. Um, we've gone back through and seen what other questions that maybe came through through emails, um, over the time that we didn't answer publicly, that we can provide the answer publicly tonight. I hope that at this point, anyone that asked a question over the past two days has either received a response that night, received a response back from us, or have they planned, um, time to get the answer of their response before Monday. But really, our goal is, is to kind of give what information we have when we have it. But we also recognize that we just had the two days that we just had into this evening, and so, doesn't look as pretty, I feel like, I'm having, you know, as it normally does. So, um, all right. You, what will be sent out to the community, um, post our meeting tonight, we have, um, a letter that will go back out, um, Dr. Crowley will send, that will have the updated FAQs. You have what is the most updated FAQs in your packet, what was picked up at the door just not, is, um, what was heated out on Monday and Tuesday night. Post the meeting time, I'm going to talk through this, and then this will be pushed out, which has an addition of about twelve FAQ, um, Q and A's that have been updated from our conversations over the past two evenings. I'll talk through kind of the broad brush, but again, this will go out to everybody. Additionally, anything else that we provide and talk about tonight will push out in kind of one communication so that everyone can have everything available. What you also had in your packets, um, was, um, a copy of the presentation that we went through Monday and Tuesday. So, some of the big questions that I want to highlight, uh, are, um, again, rising fifth graders. So, what's been talked a lot about has been kind of, you've been looking at a snapshot of data and time. What we've been doing on the backend is in preparation for Monday night, when you'll be provided those up-to-date enrollment for what it will be for September. We're, we are in the process of moving all students up a grade, so you'll see grades one through five as they will be in the building for next year. And obviously, you'll see, you won't see a kindergarten number, so it's funny because you, that's where we're, you're not going to get the capacity numbers anymore, but it's important, I think, for Monday's vote, that you're looking at the enrollment as it will be for Monday, um, for September. With that, uh, rising fifth graders, what we have planned for is in the event that all rising fifth graders had, um, chose to stay, and that we felt comfortable in both space scenarios, that all rising fifth graders who are being redistricted could stay in their buildings. We will absolutely ask for the binding decision, but I think that the more important piece is, is that if everyone said yes, then we can do it for both of them. So, that's really important. One of the other pieces is that we have already accounted for in the data and the enrollment that you'll see, um, for the vote on Monday, is that any students who are in, um, a school outside of their district zone because they are with a sibling, um, who is there because for, for special education programming, those have been districted back into the homeschool. So, they were not redistricted, um, away from their siblings, they were kept together. So, there's kind of those, all those certain parameters have been there. There are, however, as was mentioned tonight, students who are, for example, um, staff, members, students who are in, who are out of district. That process will remain the same as it does every single year. That's still, it's always a yearly request because those are always contingent based off of enrollment. And that is there, there is a form, and again, on the FAQ, I have it linked directly to the website where the form is for that out-of-district request school. I never know what to really call it, school choice, within-district move request. I feel like I need a, one word.
They call it out-of-district.
I know, but then it gets really confusing. But then I feel like school choice feels like a hot button, so I don't know what the word is, but that, within the district. So, that request will remain, um, the same as always, and those decisions have always typically been made by principals in, in August. And that is, again, because we look to make sure that our enrollment is, um, kind of the best to our knowledge before making those decisions. Um, we are prepared and anticipate that there will be other families that maybe, because of redistricting, have that request more so than, than other years, and so, the form would remain the same. So, the process that we use now, the out-of-district request form that you fill out, it gets submitted to the principal. to the principal, it's the principal's decision. It really does primarily have to do off of enrollment, and those decisions will be made, would be, not be finalized until, usually mid to late August. The other questions, there's been a lot regarding the end map, and really kind of like how we're looking at the numbers, recognizing that the end map could be two years from now, or it could be, I'm going to hope I don't say 10 years from now, but it could be kind of phased out. And I think that it's important to remember that we are really looking at the long-term plan to guide us and the short-term plan, and that we're really looking at how can we be making kind of these phased decisions each year towards something, recognizing that we, that we know that we're going to need to be looking at the map yearly, and as I mentioned during the, both of the past, kind of, community forums over the past two nights, that once the vote is made on Monday, we'll be putting together what the kind of implementation plan timeline is, so what will it look like yearly, what are the timelines of when everyone will be notified, all of those pieces. And a piece of that is, of course, going to be continually looking at that end map and ensuring that it remains viable, because I think that we know that the phase, what the phase is. I don't think anyone thinks it's like ideal ideal. I think we're, you know, we're working with what makes the most sense, and, you know, as student-centered as we can be in consideration of our schools, and so we know that it's, that we're going to need to look at things over the year. One of the questions that is highlighted in the new FAQs that we didn't go over the other night, that has come up, has been if we're able to secure space for the ECP in the future, that sooner than what we're anticipating what would happen, and at that point, we would then, again, as the goal is on Monday night to be voting for an end map, the goal of new beginning implementation plans toward that end map is as soon as we could. That is really, truly the ultimate, the ultimate goal. There's been conversation this evening regarding gray areas, grandfathered spaces, and yes, I do think that we are, I keep thinking about kind of one step at a time, and so looking at step one to Monday is voting for an end map, and then step two is working on the phase for September, and then step three is really determining what does this look like every year. And I think the, this idea of gray areas, recognizing that our enrollment fluctuates the way that it does, is something for key consideration. I will say that as we're talking about budget earlier this evening, that the central registration is a key component to the ability for us to be considering gray areas, and I say that as a whole, this is incredibly hard to manage without it being a centralized project, and so I would anticipate that if that all, all goes through, that the central registrar and that department would be a key person in the creation of the implementation plan, specifically around how the gray area enrollment would work, especially when considering, thinking of whether we're, you know, moving a component for alleviating pressure, or if in the first phase we alleviate enough pressure that we could start to just look at new enrollment as the option. It's going to be really important that we're having someone who's really, who's really helping and supporting that process. And again, that will be part of the implementation plan moving forward. Just want to make sure that I think we have everything that I had here. There's been a lot of conversations regarding, again, when we'll know the finalized data, when we're moving students up, and again, before you vote on Monday on the end map, that will be provided to all of you, the student counts for the buildings. Additionally, kind of the two big things that we have been asked about is the next steps implementation, and then about before and after, after care. You are provided this evening with a timeline of events. We, on Monday night, will have the vote for the final map. Again, we are preparing now, so that we'll be providing the counts on Monday, but also preparing that we will be able to notify families, if not on Tuesday, by Wednesday of that week, families who have been impacted by the move will begin to get notification that they are being redistricted. This will be an everybody responds process. You'll, they'll be asked to confirm receipt of the notification, as well as they'll be providing permission to be attending visits during the day to their new school. If we do not hear from families, we'll be reaching out to make sure that we have confirmation from everybody. Additionally, we'll be working with the family and community engagement staff to support the process. Students, sorry. Our principals will begin visiting the new buildings. They'll be visiting students in their homeschools as a first step, and then the weeks of May 6th through May 16th. And again, as we prepare for next week and we push out notifications and confirmation to families, we'll at that time let them know the dates for the visits. We will be providing visits to the new school during the school day with members of familiar staff within the building. From there, we also will be using time on May 23rd, which is the half-day for students. We'll be opening up the schools those afternoons for any families and students who would like to do tours, as well as we offering evening tours in all of our schools. Families will immediately be added to more newsletters, so they can start learning about the upcoming events. PTO meetings will be happening in May, inviting new families, and then we will also make sure that in August, we're going to be having kind of popsicle on the playground welcome events. Additionally, one of the questions that was asked over the past few days, and we've added in, is we have a half-day in June for our elementary staff, oh, thanks, for elementary staff in which they work on class lists as a part of that day, as well as transition planning for the next school year. And we'll be providing time for cross-building collaboration during that time to ensure that the creations of lists, anything that we do as part of the transition process for students within building, that we'll make opportunities for that to be happening cross-building as well for all students. Additionally, what made me think of it when you did that, is that, wait one second, alright. And that is transition planning. Alrighty. The last thing that you have in front of you, the question that we had, is regarding before and after-school programming. This is updated, it says as of 4:04, but this is actually truly updated as of 4:30, before and after-school programming in all elementary school buildings, and there is before programming in all schools except for one, the one school that does not. We are working to ensure that we establish for September 2025. And again, while all of our buildings might look a little bit different, the access to after, to after-scale school opportunities, both in-building and many of them also go to the same kind of bus within the community spaces. And again, while we can't, and it would be great to say it looked the exact same across all of them, it does not, however, we, there, you know, we feel confident there are options for families within each of our schools who are looking for extended time passes for the day. I'm going to hold there before I go into the bigger stuff. I feel like I'm like someone on autopilot right now with this, these things, and I have to make sure I remember all the things that we need to say.
Does anybody have any questions on these? Mr. Lipsett?
So, just a quick question on the, the implementation timeline.
Yes.
And this, Dr. Ryan, this might be more in your wheelhouse too. In terms of transitions for students who are on IEPs, is that something that's going to happen throughout? Is that something where the June 6th half-day is particularly notable?
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, we obviously will need to, once we identify who is moving, we will meet, the coordinators will meet with the building principals and the special education teams, and review all of the needs for the students, and then we will need to arrange times that, for students that need extra preview time, et cetera, visits. You know, I think it will vary based on the needs of the students, but once we can identify who the, who the children are, then we will work to make sure that they have, you know, comprehensive transition plans, because we know that our students with disabilities often need a little bit more preparation for transition.
Thank you. And just one other quick question on what's been presented so far. And I apologize, I was leafing through this, and I might have missed you say this, but in terms of families, you know, some of the deadlines for before and after-school care have already passed. Can we make arrangements with programs to transition people from one program to another?
Yes. Yeah, and we can, when, I think, we're working with building principals right now, especially for the buildings that are most prepared to be having students join them. I think in our options, we know which buildings are most likely right now, and they have certainly been doing even more preparation. This is really kind of the overall, what's, what would be happening across the community. We recognize, and I've had individual conversations with the buildings who I think we know are, are certainly going to be impacted a little bit more than others, and I think they even have more planned within that scope. And as we're kind of pushing out notifications next week to the families, we'll make sure that we include kind of all of those resources. We understand before and after-school is a really important part, and we'll work with the organizations to help. And I think too, that it's just important that people let us know if they're having any problems with anything, so that we can help assist on our end. You know, we don't know what we don't know, and so if anyone's having any problems with this, then we can assist them if anyone wants to do so.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Wetzel?
Yes, thank you for putting this together. This is a lot of work, I know, and it's all stuff the community's been asking for, so this is fantastic. It's really good to see all of it laid out. I did note that some of the schools have buses to the club and then some don't. Is there any talks in maybe getting all schools to have buses, and how would that work?
We have had this conversation with the club before. I would need to follow up on why it had, this has been looked into before, I don't remember that.
I think with the bus routes and them having to get somewhere else.
That was an issue with the middle schools.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I can follow up though, we can get a response.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, and speaking with parents.
I do think it had to do with, because we have the same bus run three different routes, so like if the elementary finishes in North Woburn, and then has to circle to the middle schools, will they have time to make a drop at the club? But we can, to the point, we can follow up and...
Yeah. I think it would be helpful. It's a really affordable program, and it offers a lot longer of a time than active eval programs do, and some parents need that, so I do think it would be really helpful. And then, the other thing I was wondering, as we're looking at new placements, speaking with building principals and teachers, would it make sense too to talk to parents as well about maybe a student, their student that maybe gets along really well with one kid, but maybe doesn't with another? Like just involving them maybe a little more than what we typically do with this process? I could, I think maybe ease some of that feeling parents are having right now, anxiousness.
When I meet with the building principals about the process, I'll certainly mention the consideration we need.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful. And the only other thing I wanted to point out, just for the community, if you go on the redistricting website, there's a link with information that you can read to help talk to your child about redistricting. There's also information for staff members who can talk to their students if your kiddo's asking, or if you just maybe want to be prepared should the question come up. So it's some really good information to check out that our administration can put together, so, thank you.
I think also, we will work carefully with the special education students and families for the transition, and, you know, different, different students need different things, but I, you know, for our kiddos that might have anxiety, we will, we will be very careful to address the different needs individually with their students.
Thank you.
I agree with that.
Great. Anybody? Ellen, do you have anything? I don't want to ignore you sitting over there in Zoomland.
No, no. I just, so there's, there's a document that you're all referencing, I don't have it, but that's okay, because I've heard everything, and I can go back and read it at the next meeting. I just want to be clear that I actually don't have what's in front of everybody. But that's okay, because I'm listening to this discussion, and I can follow along.
Okay. Any else? Another question?
So, the next piece, again, for the conversation and the goal of tonight's meeting, and I'll hand it back to Dr. Crowley, is that really the goal of the community forums is for us to be getting feedback for consideration, and I think that we heard tonight that there are a few kind of larger questions regarding Component M2, questions regarding the Phase Three to Six, and then the last one, which wasn't mentioned here, but has been mentioned in both community forums, is regarding 290 Michelam, which is a space that had been redistricted previously. And so we're going to go through, for the committee, kind of our thoughts and recommendations, and my favorite word, what's viable, kind of what we think is possible in these different, different places, and then go from there.
So I'll speak to what Ms. Young just alluded to, but I, we were asked earlier on the survey, and I want to give the exact percentages of, in the parent survey, which was the preference, and the answers are, Scenario Three was 43.3 percent, Scenario Six was 29.4, and no preference was 27.2. And again, just for full disclosure, that's the, that was the finding of that preference, so want to share that. As it goes to the recommendations, based on the feedback that we've just received during the forums, one of the questions, or one of the things we've said is we don't want to redistrict kids more than one time. And so, the students at 290 Michelam were at the Alta Vesta, they got redistricted to the Goodyear, and the question is whether they could stay at the Goodyear, and our recommendation is that we do grandfather the students at 290 Michelam, which is Avalon, back to the Goodyear, or to remain at the Goodyear.
Current enrolled.
The current enrolled students and their siblings can remain at the Goodyear. New enrolled students at the 290 Michelam, at the Avalon, would enroll at the Alta Vesta.
Okay, Ms. Wetzel?
Just a clarification question. So if a student is in kindergarten and they have a sibling, they would also be grandfathered in, they wouldn't be considered a new student?
If they're at the, if they're at the Goodyear now, in their kindergarten, they can remain.
But their sibling, younger sibling. So their three-year-old sibling is going to transition up, would they be able to go to the Avalon two, or, I mean, sorry, to the Goodyear, or would they have to go to a different school?
I would say yes, they could, they could go to the Goodyear.
Are you all set?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Another bullet point?
Sure. So the other question has been regarding to M2. I spoke with Sam Bourne primarily following the community forum on Monday around the Component M2, and just for context, while it looks like the component in a map is surrounded by, by, by Goodyear, if you actually, if you actually then look at the component, it is not near anyone at the Goodyear for a pretty, pretty significant distance. It was recommended by, by Sam Bourne in my conversations with them, in our conversations with them on Monday, as well as, again, in collaboration with them this morning, that that component should not be districted to the Goodyear. And so, what that would look like is a little, is a little bit different versus Scenario Three and Scenario Six, and so I'm going to kind of walk through it now. Again, this is, tonight is the goal of kind of providing with the contents and the recommendations. On Monday, I, Sam Bourne will have updated maps, updated numbers, you'll have all of the enrollment, and you'll be able to see what this will look like in each of the phases and in each of the maps. And the hope is that I, that I'll have them for you far before Monday.
Okay.
But, M2 in Phase Map Six and End Map Six, it is that it can be, it would be redistricted and stay at the Malcolm White in both scenarios, and there are really no concerns about it in both of those scenarios. In Phase Map Three, it would stay at the Malcolm White. However, as again, when you look at the Scenario Three End Map, the components around M2 actually don't stay, the whole, that whole M area moves, and so M2 would in End Map Three, follow those other components to the full alignment, because it would be an outlier by itself, again, if you were to keep it. And so, I will show all of that in updated maps, that you get it. Again, this was the recommendation of the consultant, that it was considered back. I'll have the updated numbers, but the recommendation is that it would not be districted on its, on its own to the Goodyear. And I'll provide the, the enrollment numbers, and again, what that looks like. What I will say is that it is, that it, that there are, between the two, it, I mean, there are no concerns with the consultant about us moving it back. I think that you'll see that it will just, that it would make more sense to follow with the other full-blown components. But again, you'll look at those maps, anybody want to say? This is their recommendation. Did you want to talk about?
Well, yeah, if, if, one of the questions that has come, and I'd like to specifically thank the caregiver advisory committee here for doing this work and running the numbers... advisory committee here for doing this work and running the numbers, is the question of whether or not we can take the end six map, but for the phased option in September, go with what is currently phase three. So instead of adopting either all of scenario three or all of scenario six, the committee could potentially adopt a scenario six end map, but with the recommendation that we move forward with a, with what is currently the phase three map. And that, so my question basically is, is that viable? Does that work in terms of the numbers? What benefits or drawbacks might there be there?
You reminded me of what I was going to say when I drew a blank. That, so to answer the question regarding, again, the conversation, and we provided the information regarding using phased map three for end map six with Sam Bourne, and I think, again, I think the overall reminders were really, really, our goal Monday is to pick an end map, right? And so we're picking an end map. And so that, and that's because it gives us options within the phase. And so absolute, you know, Sam Bourne agreed, and I would agree, and Dr. Crowley can speak to it, that using the phased map three to the end map six is absolutely viable and makes fine, sound sense. And what I would add to that is, which is what I was going to say before, is that the phased map three, it is, it is a, it is better for M2 to stay at the Malcolm White than the phased map six. They are both doable. I don't have necessarily concerns, but I would say that moving it back in for the phased map three is cleaner. Would be my kind of overall statement about it. However, I would still say that, that end map six matched with the phased three is, I think it's great. I mean, I think that's why we have a lot of people who provide us with a lot of options, and why having more people look at more things is better. And again, I'll let Dr. Crowley speak to it, but in terms of from the consultant's end and from our end, we've worked out all of the numbers in both directions, and it's certainly viable on our end.
I appreciate that. Just, if I can just pop in, just simply because I think for my standpoint, and you know, obviously we'll make our final vote on Monday, but the end scenario six map has a lot to recommend it, given a lot of the pressures that we have and a lot of the needs. But I also very much hear a lot of the community feedback on the phase six map, and that phase three is an easier, cleaner pull. And so the fact that this is viable, I think, opens up a really, a really nice potential solution here. So, thank you.
And I guess I would say, not only is it viable, but it's a preferred option by administration. So if you're waiting to hear what we're looking for, there you go. So we are, our preference is map six with the phase three for September of 2025.
Okay. Anybody? Ms. Wetzel?
I just have to echo what Mr. Lipsit said. This was a huge undertaking by our caregiver representatives. This action came directly from them, and it was quite a lengthy description and organization of everything that they talked about, and I had wonderful conversations with some of the people that put it together. So just thank you for all the work you put on this. Great job. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, another question.
Sure.
Sorry, I don't mean it now.
Nope, nope.
Timing is awkward.
I know. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So the map three, sorry, the phase three to six scenario, so the phase three is already embedded, it wouldn't change at all except for the tweet site that you were talking about with M2? So I guess what I'm just trying to confirm in my own mind is that this is the map that is published to the public, and they've had a chance to look at it?
There is nothing that changes in the phased map three to an end map six. It's all maps that have been seen, besides the recommendations that we had from the community forums, which those adjustments we've looked at on our end, and we'll provide those numbers. And again, those recommendations came from the community forums that we're providing to you guys tonight. But the map itself, it is, nothing else has changed.
Great. And both of them, as my understanding, really abide by the principles pretty strongly. It's just that six has a little bit more oomph to it, which I think is that the community is causing anxiety in the community that it might be too much movement in one year. Is that really what I'm hearing?
Yes. I think so.
I think that the two, the two biggest differences is just, is really the amount of movement from now in phase one.
Right, okay.
Again, though, I think that's why I, and I, it's hard because we're really thinking about September, and I have a hard time kind of stepping out of that space too, but I keep going back to what we're really trying to look at is like our ideal end map. And so I just, I think it's important to also not, like if there's ways that we can get to what we feel like is the ideal end map that feel better now, right? I think we really need to be thinking about, like, what do we want as an end map, and what considerations we can take to kind of get to that, to that space.
It's just further my opinion that there's more than one way to get to Walmart. And so, scenario six Walmart, and really, and have a lot of flexibility in how they definitely want to do this. And what I like about it is also that we happen to already vet a phased situation to get to six. So, I mean, it's just a nice option. I have to think through it, but I like, I like where it's going, because it's a nice, I think what Alice Sizdale said, it's a nice compromise, and it really has that feeling that it's bought among the community to really get to this place. So I'm liking where that, where that's going. So, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Ryan?
That was actually my comment that I think, as Alex said, it does really feel like a nice compromise.
Yeah. Okay, great. Anybody else?
And again, this was really a response to kind of get everyone up to date. We'll have a presentation for Monday. We'll have, as soon as I have what I feel like are ready for primetime maps and numbers, I'll send them out to the committee in preparation for Monday, and then they'll be part of the presentation Monday.
Okay. Ms. Moran?
Thank you, ma'am. If I could to, I guess, Ms. Young, for your presentation, just a little more notes for that.
Yeah.
The, we just passed a, we're hoping to pass a budget down to City Hall, and I'm hearing, well, we can add a bus here, we're going to have services here, we're going to have, you know, this and that. Could you somehow incorporate some kind of funding, and if so, you know, just, it was going to be two buses, three buses, additional staff person? These are all numbers and money things that, you know, maybe earlier in this presentation, earlier in the formula here, the, you know, it was a wash, I understand that. But now we're, you know, we're doing this, we're doing that, we're adding a bus, we're adding services. So I just want to make sure that we have those numbers and those figures when it comes time to initiate this plan. So add that to your list.
Sure, I'm happy to add it to it. I can answer pretty, pretty, a lot of that right now. So the current number of elementary classroom teachers is 108. Phased option three is 108 teachers. I told Ms. Dickerson earlier how very excited I was. And phased option six is 109. And the, we do not anticipate with either phased option, an increase in the number of buses. It just would be a change, it would be changing your routes. We even looked at today to ensure that we would be able to maintain two stops at 290 Michum within current busing kind of loops, and we feel comfortable with both. So I'm not anticipating that the transportation will change. It will, it will look different. And then again, with the teachings, the teaching staff, I feel pretty, pretty comfortable with those. And then in terms of other staffing, I don't think that we're anticipating a change.
Okay, and the other part of my discussion previously for all of this was the new complexes being built across the town. We have a new development, a new Boston Street, past the new bridge up there. People living in there now, the Mill Street Apartments, I believe is going online soon. Again, when we talk about phasing these folks in, phasing in students, phasing in families, I just want that to be considered as well. So just add that to your, your to-do list.
No, and I think, again, this is just a magic, like, we're planning for right here and now. We're doing the best that we can to make a plan that responds and reacts to the changing and fluid demographics, but also just, I think, a good reminder of the previous process that we've used, that as new building has come into place, and I believe it's in the policy, Ms. Crowley, that we had done previously with new developments, that we would be looking at where that development would be districted as it came online. It does not necessarily go to the, to the set space. And that's what we had done previously. And I would imagine, again, we can go back and we can look at the policy with the school committee, but that's been our previous policy that I imagine would maintain. I'm not really sure what else we could do if we didn't do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll comment on that. My understanding that there's a delineation, you know, the school committee draws the district lines, but the administration does classroom placement. So if something becomes new, it really becomes up to the administration to decide what's, you know, what school the children should attend if it hadn't existed before, and then he just becomes sort of like informed of that. That's how, that's how I think that works in the past.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I think we'll be using that one a bit soon.
Madam Chair, may I speak again?
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. Crowley.
I just, I also think that, that as we finish redistricting, and we look at where the dust settles, so to speak, and we have a change in redistricting, and we've actually done it, I think that's when we can renew sort of a discussion around, do we have enough square footage? And will we need additional space, particularly in West Woburn? So I don't think that conversation is dead as, right now. I do think that redistricting and doing an exhausting sort of placement issue, then looking at space and trying to obtain modulars again until we build a new school, I think that's absolutely something that we could put that on the table, should we continue to need square footage after this endeavor.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Wetzel?
I have a question on that piece. Is that something Resources and Capital Planning could look into in our next meeting or a couple meetings before the end of the school year?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, we are meeting May 14th, so I'm happy to add that to the agenda.
There you go.
And then I had one other question just around, I guess, gray areas. Ms. Young, when we're looking at those new built apartments coming up, would those be considered like a gray zone? Because we would be districting them based on where we have space? Or does it work differently?
No, I think I'm careful to define it, because I think as soon as I do, I don't want a definition to go and not have us kind of thought through it really carefully. I think that the redistricting provides us with an opportunity to bring together, again, you know, and certainly think that the administration will work on it, but I think that it's a conversation that will continue with, you know, arrange of stakeholders and back with the school committee. But I think that a redistrict provides us with an opportunity to think about our enrollment practices, our districting practices, school placement practices. I think that kind of what gray lines means for us, I think this opens up the chance for us to look into that. And I guess I would want to be careful to not, not to define it now and have that be what everyone believes is going to be what we do. I certainly think this is something that needs to happen soon. I'm certainly not saying this is a, you know, too far down. I think it's pretty immediately after this decision is made that we need to kind of bring together the group and kind of look at what is the timeline, the process, and really like what it, what does it mean and how do we want to consider the gray lines? But I also think that it's important to kind of look at those scenarios through. So I think it's easy to say, we want to do this practice, but then we need to look at, okay, so if this were to be what we did, and we were to put this into practice, what does this mean? We live in the world of unintended consequences sometimes, and I think redistricting can be one of those spaces where it can seem like a really great idea on paper, but then when we start to look at it in implementation, there's reasons it may not, you know, that it may not work. But I think that, that the gray lines opens up kind of a range of options, and I think what we recognize is that during this phased approach, we're going to have to really kind of think outside the box on all of the ways that we can creatively think about how we're just, you know, how we're districting so that we are not kind of getting in the position we are in right now, which is needing space, you know, for something immediately.
That, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you. So it's in that implementation phase with the central registration office?
Yes. Yes, I would say again, I think that the gray, the gray line is absolutely contingent upon a central registrar. I am not, I am not, I am not a central registrar. So, we will need more people for that.
So they're kind of smoky gray right now.
Yeah, smoky gray. Yeah, I mean, I do drive around Woburn and think to myself that I'm driving through, you know, page 10 right now, but it's okay.
All right. So we all set on this? Oh, Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to give a brief, where I'm from, we say we give props where props is due. So I would like to give props to the administration team. You guys have been amazing through this whole process. In comparison to last year, I have said it many times, you cannot spell community without unity, and I have seen so much, so much more collaboration between our body and the community, our parents and the community, partners and so forth. So I'm grateful to be part of this process. It feels so much better to, to be able to have these conversations. I'm a firm believer in having difficult conversations. I truly believe that it can make the relationship tighter or stronger, if you will. And so I'm grateful, as I always say, grateful to the parents and the community members that speak up and are willing to speak up, because I think it gives space for others that may have a difficult time speaking up. So I just want to voice that, and again, thank you, Admin, for your hard work, and Sam Bourne, organization I appreciate as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Austin. Moving on. So Subcommittee Reports. We'll finance that to me, and we will meet on Monday. So we'll update that. So Community Relations Subcommittee?
We have not met as of yet.
Curriculum and Data Trends?
We haven't met but are working on scheduling one, preferably before our next regular school meeting. Not before Monday, but before our next regular.
Awesome. Yes. And Policy Subcommittee?
We have met, actually.
Oh, there you go.
March 14th, at 9:00 AM in the superintendent's conference room. In attendance were myself, Ms. Chisholm, Assistant Superintendent Courtney Young, Principal Dan Rassenin, Physics teacher Stephen Ochs, and Tony Wyman, the Human Resources Director, and ML Director Rainia Caldwell. We discussed removal of BDC policy due to an update of a previous policy, which was improperly omitted. So I'm going to ask that we, I'm going to make a motion that we remove BDC from our policy manual.
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Sackel?
Aye.
Sweet. So these are being, thank you, Ms. Crowley. And by that, I mean, that is what I'm putting it on the table to do. We are not doing it immediately. We have updated language on, let me see, so we discussed BEC, Executive Sessions, which is on hold for now. EBC, Emergency Plans, which is a new policy, is also on hold. GBG E is a domestic violence leave policy that was brought by Mr. Wyman, and it was reviewed by legal, and there were no changes. So we are going to add that for tabling as well. And then updates to GBGF, which is a comprehensive family and medical leave policy, also recommended by Mr. Wyman, which was reviewed, I reviewed with him last year, and then we brought it to this, that meeting. So that is also for adoption, and that replaces GCC, GCC E, GDCC, and GDCC E. JCA, Assignment of Students to Schools, was reviewed. We're going to hold on to that one. Yes, I think yes. And then school admissions, JF, as well as JFE1 and JFE2, we are moving forward for tabling. And then we reviewed EGAF, which there has been changes in regards to this since then, but student use of technology in schools. So this was recommended by, or requested by Mr. Ochs and some of the other educators at the high school. A cell phone and personal electronic device policy. So there was a survey done by Mr. Ochs and of parents and guardians. We, he presented all of the results of that, and they were discussing doing a trial at the high school where the administration would be enforcing the current procedure, which is outlined in the high school handbook of the door pockets that are in the school, really more reinforcing what is already sort of the practice. We wanted to send EGAF to the full committee in the meantime, in hopes of approval by the end of the year, so that it can be implemented for next year. And Mr. Ochs was going to come to speak to us in May, which is tomorrow. So with post-pilot survey results, things have changed in the meantime, so that is sort of on pause. But I still, this was sent out to the committee, and it can still be reviewed, and it can still be kind of sitting there. We can table it, and then any changes, anything that comes up, at least, you know, next time we can discuss, we can push it forward, whatever happens. And then future policies to consider is considering adding an AI use policy, which some other districts are doing. So I would like to table those as well. I'm going to make that motion.
Second.
All right. Al Tava?
Aye.
All right.
And then while I have you, we just need to discuss, let's see, from February, which are currently tabled, we have BBA, BDE, BDEB, removal of BEDA, also BD, sorry, BEDB, GBK, new policies ECAF, FFA, GBEBD, GBEE. And that was all of that. So I, here's our discussion, if anybody has any discussion items on those? Excellent. I will move those forward for action at our next regularly scheduled meeting. And we adjourned probably like ten thirty, ten thirty-nine AM.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward. Resource and Capital Planning?
Yes, we actually met three times in March. But, yeah, it was a lot. I'm wondering if it's all right with the committee if I could just sort of summarize because ninety-nine percent of it is redistricting and we've already talked all about it. So I'm just going to tell you the dates and who was there and if there was anything that wasn't redistricting. So we met the sixth of March at four fifteen. There was Ms. Cormier, Dr. Crowley, Dr. Ryan, Ms. Young and myself. And that was entirely redistricting. We did have fire station for renovation, but there's no updates on that yet. We met again on the twelfth of March and in attendance was Mr. Austin, Ms. Cormier, Dr. Crowley, Dr. Ryan, Ms. Young and myself. Again, that was entirely redistricting as well. And then we met again on three nineteen. In attendance was Mr. Austin, Ms. Cormier, Dr. Crowley, Dr. Ryan and myself. And that, I believe, was also all redistricting. Yep, and that was all redistricting. And then we meet again on May fourteenth, which will be more than redistricting.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Student Services and Achievement?
Have not met.
All right. How about Billy Caput, ECP Task Force?
We haven't met.
Ms. Crowley, no? Her favorite thing. All right. Correspondence, we did get a lot of resignation from Mara Emblem. Ellen, would you like to speak on what your plans for that would be as far as?
Yeah, I did some when I, when I come back and resume the chair. Although my chair, Chisholm, is doing a great job, I might just make it for a minute.
No, thank you.
I think the school committee can direct me, we can discuss this at, at our next regular meeting to, you know, put out an ad in the paper and get the social media going about getting someone else to, that we can appoint to the recreation commission. So we have, I'll just, I'll back up a little bit. The school committee appoints a person to sit on the recreation commission and Mara Emblem, after doing a fantastic job in advocating for children with vulnerabilities in the recreation space, have resigned. And so we now have the ability and the power to appoint somebody. So this is very exciting. I believe last time I was chair when we had a resignation and I sent a, put an ad in the paper, like I said, and really recruited three exceptional candidates. So I think that would probably be the plan moving forward. Or of course, the committee could make a motion to refer it to personnel, whatever the committee would like to do.
Well, we can discuss that in the next meeting. Whatever's easiest. But there's a pattern, yeah, that when you're chair, people resign. I'm getting a little nervous.
I've been, I've been meaning to say.
All right. But maybe, kind of a motion to accept her letter of resignation so we can start the process.
So moved.
Second. Al Tava?
Aye.
There we go. Awesome. Okay, future addenda items, I think we have a couple going on there. Is anything, give it to Ellen. I'm good. Do we have an executive session this evening?
We do, to deliberate, I believe.
Okay. All right. So I'll take a motion to go into executive session.